Yeah.
Thanks, Mike. Madam Chairman, you have a quorum. But before you start, I'd like to make a couple announcements or point things a couple of different ways. The halls, as you come in from the elevator, is a -- we're reinstalling an installation that was at the Pulitzer Museum over the Pulitzer Museum, but in the outside space over the last week called Visualizing Density. And much of the work was done by a Wash U student that was working under the tutelage of Brett Critten and his wife Sarah at UIC Architects. It's one of those outside visual displays that had a little discussion around it. Short-lived, we asked for it, so we have it for about a month, and we're putting it out. It's in process. It's really two large displays of four-by-eight sheets of data, all data and maps, so I love it. We're just in the process of finalizing it, so it's still a little, not in its ultimate position, but we'll leave it out there for about a month. So feel free to browse by it as you go by, because it has some great points about density and how the city compares to other cities. Also, on display, but back by the boardroom, is the main boardroom, is a display on mid-century modern architecture in the city. And that will have a longer run and stay here. And then there's something that's in front of Madam Chairman, that I love her display today, because it's fresh, it happened today.
It's on the news today.
On the news today. Is the American Planning Association, each year designates ten locations across the country as great neighborhoods, ten as great public spaces, and ten as great streets. And today is their announcement today. And today, the Central West End was designated one of America's ten great neighborhoods. And their method of operation is it's not something you apply for. They sort of study and start making some calls and making some inquiries and narrowing things down. And they tell you, they're thinking about you. So we actually started engaging them about in some preliminary actions. And if you remember last, so this year, it's Central West End as a neighborhood. Last year, we got Forest Park as one of America's great places. And then we skipped a year, but Washington Avenue was made as one of America's great streets. Wydown was America's great street. It has about 150 feet in the city. And but the first, in the first realm, early years of doing this, they designated Delmar, and they designated the loop, meaning from the Wall Bash Station, both in the city and the county, as one of America's great streets. And Joe Edwards has used that in much of it as marketing. So we're really happy that we're finding that location, that designation. And I'll just plug it a little bit, is as we looked at other cities, there aren't that many cities that have them, all of those categories. And then the other part is, you think about our places, that portion of Delmar, the downtown portion of Washington Avenue, Forest Park, and the Central West End. When you look at these, these aren't places that have been just stable, iron-clad places since the 20s, the 30s. They all have bottoms and have come back. And so on October 17th, the state chapter of the American Planning Association has a conference, and the national leadership, well, the executive director of the American Planning Association will be in town. He's newly installed in that position. He used to live in the Central West End, so he's kind of excited. And a colleague of mine, who is the former planning director of San Diego, is the current president, and he'll be in town. So we're going to do something that will give us a chance to talk to the media again and make that be known in the Central West End. So we're happy about that. I'll say one last thing about that. This morning, I was in the Central West End at seven o'clock, and at Euclid in Maryland Plaza, there's a couple of places where you might get a cup of coffee. And there was a TV truck. And it was Channel Two, this information had been sent to the press and embargoed. It was Channel Two doing a live shot. And I go to this location often enough that I know the regulars that are sitting out in their tables outside, and I went in and sort of knew, and it was busy. And I could see them do, you know, a 45-second event. And I walked out and asked my guys that were out there, I said, "Jeez, did they tell you what they were doing?"
No, 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 they didn't.
And I said, "Oh, God, we think it's something about, you know, crime." You know, they're just doing something about crime. And I said, "Well, guess what? I know."
I know those guys.
Yeah. Actually, it's nothing very positive for a change, and the neighborhood that you're visiting this morning has this designation. So anyway, great, good news.
We have a quorum, and I'll call the meeting to order. But could you call the rolls so the commissioner on the phone understands who's here?
Sure. Alderwoman Crusen.
Here.
Chair Stoudt.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Commissioner Peoples.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Jay.
Here.
Commissioner Spade.
Here.
And Commissioner Visentainer and Alderman Kohn are not present.
Thank you. We'll move to item two, approval of the minutes from the September 3 meeting, which were mailed to us in plenty of time. We go over and include them. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. The move is seconded, that we accept the minutes as distributed to us. Are there any comments or corrections or additions to the minutes? Do we have the roll, please?
Sure. Alderwoman Crusen.
Aye.
Chair Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye, while I'm there.
And Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
Okay, we'll move into the action items. Dick, you want to pick one first?
Yes, we have two rezoning tonight, one is mine, and the other one is Daphne Moore's last project in the city, because she left our office last Friday, so I'm going to be This is a rezoning on the hill, and it's hard to see, but there's a very small area. It's 12 feet by 42 feet, and it's a portion of this residential property, 5213 Bischoff, and it's immediately adjacent to the corner commercial, which fronts on Marconi. And so this is Bischoff, Marconi, and then the, I call it the drive, this area, they're proposing to consolidate it, to add it to the corner property, and then the remainder of that parcel is going to be combined with the one next door for a new home site. I got some maps that'll explain. So it'll end up with dual zoning on the corner property, which then the single-family district doesn't allow commercial, and that's why it's being rezoned at. Chair of Shield Properties, and he is the owner of the commercial property on the corner and the two residential properties. So this is the addresses that we're talking about, it's 5213, next door is 5215, and this is the corner commercial. And you'll notice there's a existing garage at the back of that. This is a view of the area, the 12 feet, I think, actually goes a little bit in where the house is, but it's basically this drive that goes under the carport and back along the side of the building. And you can see the greenery, the vines on it, right there is the commercial property. So this is the corner commercial, the white rectangle there is the carport, and then this is the two houses. If you go to the alley and look in, this, where the dumpsters is, this is the house next door, which has a longer lot, and this is the parking lot, which I'll show you, that's related to this property. So this is the corner property in Marconi, and this is 5213, the one that we're talking about parcel from, and this is neighboring one, 5250. So this is the area that's being consolidated and re-subdivided. And the plan is, the plan is to demolish the two houses, so the first lot will be residential minus rezon. The third lot being plus, the smaller areas. This is a lot that's owned by a single family, adjacent to that commercial. This is the corner business, and this is kind of the garage portion that's next to the zoning site. If you walk a little further on Marconi, or Bischoff, this is the single-family residential, which is the property to the east. Immediately to the north is the parking area that's part of this property, so the commercial business on Marconi. And then if you go across the street from the zoning area, the service company is here, and this is about where the rezoning has gone for us. It's commercial on two sides, residential on one, which is the lot that's going to be redeveloped, and then the parking lot for commercial. The area is neighborhood preservation area, which of course, we all know, allows neighborhood commercial and residential. Staff finds it's in conformity with the neighborhood preservation area, which encourages corner commercial and new infill residential development. And the zoning administrator recommended this area be rezoned from A to F, kind of the area, the normal things that we see about good zoning practices, and basically to take care of this dual zoning. And to allow the expansion of the business and things like that. Senator is here from Shield Properties, and I plan to also answer any questions.
I'm sure there's not any questions.
So two homes being demolished, one house being replaced?
Yes. See, my interest is, I actually operate out of the business, so on the sound elevation, where you saw the awning and the back of the building, on the top picture of the part of the side, that's where I've office for the last 12 years. I bought the building in 1998. I spent 17 months, I'm sorry, 20 months renovating the building, because it got repaired. I did probably everything except the analytical work that was required. I also basically revamped the upstairs and put two apartments. It was vacant at the time, so I have two, two-bedroom apartments upstairs now. I have two commercial tenants on the front of the building. I just had the awning removed because I had a tear in it, so you don't see the awning, but the awning on the front matches the awning on the side. On the backside of the building, we saw the vines growing on the second floor. I enlisted the help of a firm called SWD Design. SWD helped me put a garden roof up on that area. The building was, received a test of renovations in 1999 by the Landmark Association. Everything that I do, I try to do with the highest of quality. My intent for the appeal for the rezoning is, I desperately think, I facilitate a lot of deliveries with my business. I sell commercial construction products. I inventory a small amount of material. At some point in time, I may need more space, so if I run that area, I can use it for parking for myself and my associate, as well as potentially put a garage there, which would give me a little bit more inventory space. And then I want to build a home on the site, one single-family home I'm negotiating with a potential buyer now. And I have experience building really quality, custom homes, and I would obviously want to have something next to my property that would raise my property value and enhance the neighborhood. So that's my interest in that rezoning appeal. I guess I'm struck with how small it is. Well, it's a pretty big deal. That little piece of ground is, you know, but I want to do, I want to do it, and the other option I have is just to form an easement and develop the property. But I don't want to be dealing with this issue down the road. It's kind of painful and time-consuming. I know it's going to take some time to get through this process, but to me, it's worth it to do it and be done with it.
You could do the parking on an easement, but building, building on it wouldn't work.
Other questions, if I may?
Second.
The move is seconded, that we use the rezoning F, commercial district, and recommend it to the Board of Adjustments. It's in conformity with our strategic land use plan. Any other comments? Could you read the rolls, please?
Sure. Alderwoman Crusen.
Aye.
Alderman Kohn.
Aye.
Chair Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Spade.
Spade.
And the motion passes with all but one voting yes and one abstention.
Okay, great. And Dick, you're going to take it?
Yes.
Magnolia.
This is a rezoning.
Thanks very much.
Tom Pickler's here again this month. We liked it so much, she came back. Didn't quite get this rezoning on last month, like we'd elected him, but this is related to residential scattered sites that Daphne presented last month. Parcel is on Magnolia, parts of Graboy and Fox Park Neighborhood. This vacant building, this vacant lot next to it, the plan is to combine the parcels and then re-subdivide it into three new parcels. And if you remember, I'll show you the design drawings, it's for three, two families. And I guess the important thing is, this is downzoning C to B. And the B allows the two families, so this is kind of a simple, the owner is requesting a downzone. This is the rezoning area, and I have the single-family house, which is already partially falling down. And this is the site, and the elevations, the three, two-family buildings, and then a site plan showing them also. So the density really does remain there, instead of, it's a four-family and a single-family or having all two families. And you can see, it's right on the boundary between B and C, and this is being downzoned. It's the neighborhood preservation area, which of course encourages infill development. Staff recommends approval for the sound zoning, and the zoning administrator also recommends it, so that it's not too difficult. Tom is here to answer questions, or is he going to answer?
Any questions, Mr. Commissioner?
So leaving it C does not allow him to do this?
Right. It's a dual zoning, the zoning administrator wants to have it, but he don't put all the ones.
We're going to re-subdivide these three parcels, then combine two, actually the three parcels.
Right.
So they have to be at the same zone, as I understand it.
Oh, so one of the parcels is?
One B, one C. But the project we're excited about, the Habeck Report, we just got a firm commitment from NHDC today, so we're going to try to get closed by the end of this month. The end of construction is shortly thereafter, so we're excited about it.
How many total houses is that?
Well, this project is 36 units total. 24 of the units are going to be right here in Fox Park in the northern part of, and Park West. And really a first for us, at least on the multi-family side. Half the units will be newly constructed buildings, and half will be in REHS. We're really hoping that our project can be a catalyst on that 2800 block of Magnolia, which really needs to help investment right now, so that there's new construction on the south side. We're going to be doing a historic tax credit. We have a city-owned building in 2829 Magnolia, and some other sites written around Fox. So there's already another proposal that's been submitted to NHDC for funding, it'll take care of some of the other buildings and meetings, so we'll hopefully get funded as well.
So as though we were looking at three buildings today, we looked at that whole package last week in terms of sites for last month.
In terms of redevelopment.
In terms of redevelopment plan, and the question I really, when you said you got good news about the financing, it's not just about these three homes, it's all 24?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Great.
Second?
The move is seconded.
Previous rule?
And previous rules had made the motion.
Had.
Any other comments or questions? Could you read the roll, please?
Sure. Alderwoman Crusen.
Aye.
Alderman Kohn.
Aye.
Chair Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
And Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move to the Chapter 99, and DeBoliver Place, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. This is a chapter of the lighting study and redevelopment plan for the 5528, 5560 Purging Avenue redevelopment area. The site is about two acres in size. It consists of two parcels. It's located in the 5500 block of Purging Avenue in DeBoliver Place, which is one of the most densely populated neighborhoods in the city. The site is also located near Forest Park, as you can see, and is located down the street from the Forest Park and DeBoliver Metrolink Station. The existing uses are four partially occupied, five and six-story buildings that have a total of 160 apartment units and a related parking lot. These buildings were renovated in 1980 under the Waterman Purging redevelopment plans, which was a large-scale redevelopment project of the entire neighborhood that was undertaken by Pantheon Corporation, if you remember. What's being proposed here is a $3 million rehab project for those four buildings. The prospective developer and owner are two LLCs that are affiliated with Asprey Properties, which is a real estate firm based in the Central West End. Mr. Sid Chakrabarti of that firm is here tonight, and he'll be available to answer any questions. This is an aerial photo of the redevelopment area and the vicinity. The large parcel, 5560, includes this six-story building as well as a parking lot, and the 5528 parcel includes three smaller apartment buildings. In terms of the vicinity, you have a couple of commercial buildings, some larger apartment buildings to the north, a recreational complex, large surface parking lot, and more apartments. To the south are the Metrolink tracks, the Forest Park Parkway, where you can see these buildings, and finally, on the other side of the Parkway, are the backyards of some of the mansions that face Forest Park. These photos were taken from the Parkway. On the left is the six-story building, which has 54 units. On the right are the rears of the three apartment buildings, and they have a total of 106 units. These are the fronts of those three buildings that make up 5528 Purging Avenue, facing Purging. And you can see, these are some multi-story catwalks that connect those three buildings. Those catwalks allow people to walk from one building to another without having to go outside. Unfortunately, they're not very attractive in appearance, and there's been some crime problems, I understand, from the developers that have occurred in those catwalks, and the developers proposing to remove those structures. This is the larger apartment building, 5560. As you can see, some of the work has already begun as part of this project, and it's now being marketed as the Park Lux apartment, typically. Here's some side elevations of that same building, you can see the size of the structure. In terms of existing conditions, on the left, you can see some warped boards that are covering some windows. I think this goes back to the renovation back in 1980. On the upper right, you see some deteriorated bricks and mortar, which will require some tuck pointing. On the bottom right, you see some crumbling balconies. So some exterior work will be done, but most of the renovation work will actually be in the interiors of the buildings. In terms of adjacent properties, lots of fairly high-density apartment buildings, a recreational complex that's located across the street. It's not in the best of condition, and there's a large surface parking lot that's located east of the complex. The photo on the left shows a streetscape shot of that particular block. As you can see, it's tree-lined, very attractive, and there's some redevelopment work that's going on through that area, including a new apartment building that's currently under construction at the corner of Purging and Union Boulevard. The city's strategic land use plan designates the site as a neighborhood preservation area, both the site as well as much of the surrounding area, as you can see. And that basically calls for the preservation and infill development of residential buildings. So the redevelopment plan is in conformity with the strategic land use plan. It calls for 10 years of tax abatement, no eminent domain is necessary, and staff has recommended approval of the lighting study and redevelopment plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Chakrabarti of the City of Manhattan is available as well.
Does the commission have any questions, and Mr. Chakrabarti?
Yes. You have to remove those boards, right?
So we're working with Joe Klitzing, the Board of Adjustment. Removing those boards requires a little bit more, because it's been drywalled underneath, so it's part of the residential structures now. Some of those modifications are contrary to the historic district, so what we're working on doing is, we're making it more attractive. We have a couple of options, but most likely, what it'll be is like, almost like a fake window essentially, where it doesn't go inside of the unit.
Sure.
Because that's not like common space for people to spend the long.
It alters the exterior.
Exactly. So yeah, but I mean, we definitely want to modify the exterior. Tremendous dollars, over a million dollars is spent in tuck pointing, removing the catwalks, building elevators. The reason these catwalks were installed was because the middle elevator building doesn't have egress, so it actually has no way of entering the middle building or exiting the middle building. But crime is actually, really, the real negative to this property has been a real blighted issue in the past when Mills had it, and then the Cusimatos after them. I mean, if you look at calls for service in the neighborhood, and some of the severe crimes in the past year, there was a homicide of a building prior to ownership, I think last October, so about a year from today. There was a heroin bust in that parking lot that connects to these properties. So the real issue has been, because the properties have these catwalks, there's no elevator, there's no direct access to the units, they've had to sacrifice the tenant quality that they put into these buildings. And so I think it really requires substantial redevelopment to get the right tenant population, and that you're not sacrificing the customers that you're putting into these buildings, sacrificing the neighborhood in terms of. So far, so good. We've victim about 45 people from the buildings for a variety of issues, but I actually met with the Proms Property Officer about two weeks ago, and our calls for service have moved from about 100 last quarter to about five in the most current quarter. So I would say that I think our strategy's been effective so far.
What's the timing of completing?
Our horizon to complete the entire project is by May of next year. So we're about a year project on these particular sites.
Of course, we love every dollar you put into the.
Of course, we love every dollar you put into the property. I question whether it's really enough for a project of the scale, particularly what you're describing, the infrastructure and any skin building. It turns out that's the nineteen-thousand-five-hundred percent. But that's before you've taken out for tuck pointing and elevators and demolition. Is that number really gonna get you where you need to go?
We're actually, we're almost fifty percent of the way through the second quarter. So we've been going pretty quickly. We have hard numbers for almost every component of this project outside of one of the elevators that needs reconstruction, building. We're making our hard numbers for that. But we did about six months' worth of due diligence prior to even acquiring the properties for a variety of reasons, beyond just these properties. We put together two other properties that are not in this presentation that we're also redeveloping in that same strip. They happen to be a little bit further down the strip. The point only being that, like, we had, the land elevator consultants went through all the elevators and even designed it. Joe Klitzing had already presented the architectural renderings of the elevators. So we got some pretty hard numbers even prior to starting construction.
Yeah, and the only basis, my question is, is we're to rule that it's blighted and that this will help overcome the blighting. We need to make sure that the funds are sufficient to overcome the blighting.
Sure. I guess, just so we're on the same page, we actually have an overage that takes us up to five million dollars. So even though we presented three-point-two-six, the loan structure takes us up to five million. And in this particular case, I think just to put the board's mind at ease, although this is a state historic tax project, none of the state historic tax credits are involved in financing, meaning that we assumed that whether we got the credits or not, we're a hundred percent financed for the term of the project up to five million.
So as noted, is, this took a turn to needing redevelopment back in the late seventies, early eighties. So now it's back to us again. So one set of the toolbox was used then, and now it's before us is being blighted and needing that incentive yet again, this time through the course of a Chapter ninety-nine, which would be applied to this, and we established the blight and let them proceed forward. With this case, on the tax abatement side, it would be ten years of tax abatement.
Other questions?
Are there any improvements in security, or widening all that on the parking lot on the backside?
So that, we've already actually got all the surface parking lights. After two months of struggling with that, we've actually got all the surface parking lights working now between fifty-five-sixty's parking lot all the way down to fifty-three-eighty-six. We're getting, we got that fixed finally. But we do, we're actually, for most of the brick, as you've seen the deterioration, what we're gonna end up having to do is probably change the surface of the brick itself. So Joe is working on figuring out a material that we can use to. Because the bricks are all like different sections of brick. They've gone back and patched it with another section of brick. To answer your question about lighting, yeah, we have about a twenty thousand dollar budget to add, just additional lighting to that property.
Looked on Waterman in nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine, right behind the pool.
Oh, yeah.
So that was a fine break. Remember when that first renovation came, all those were boarded up?
I've seen, I actually have the pictures. I got the pictures from another developer that's been in the neighborhood for a long time. The original pictures of the building with all the windows like shot out, kind of like Beirut or something.
Other questions?
I'm really happy that Sid and Vic have bought these properties. These properties are now in the twenty-sixth ward, but up until a couple of years ago, they were in the twenty-eighth ward, so I'm fairly familiar with them. Sid, I hope that you guys will be able to replace those windows and not... I really think that's kind of an important feature. I talked to Vic about that, and it sounds like maybe you're not gonna do that, which I think is a real missed opportunity. So that's just my two cents worth. You know, I think the crime that occurred in and around those properties is mostly a result of really poor teneting, not by you, by the previous folks. I do think that DeBoliver Place, which is, I think some of the right up here says Skanker DeBoliver, but this is in the DeBoliver Place neighborhood. I think that the DeBoliver Place neighborhood is pretty fragile and pretty vulnerable right now. And I think that because there is so much new apartment product close by, that, I mean, just down at the corner, there's a new building, you know, six blocks away in the central west end, ten blocks away in Midtown. There are a lot, there's a not lot of new apartment product getting ready to come online. So folks that are in DeBoliver Place now, there are twelve hundred units in DeBoliver Place, will, if they have a little extra money every month in their pocket and they want a shiny new apartment, my concern is that, well, they'll say, well, let's go down here, you know, six blocks or ten blocks, and get a shiny new apartment and leave, you know, DeBoliver Place, which will be the folks who can most afford to live in those units. And the risk is that the landlords, who have to have it leased up, will backfill with a less desirable tenant. And so I think there's a real possibility, without some real action, that DeBoliver Place, you know, potentially isn't as good in two years as it is now. Now, we've got this big investment, and they'll do good teneting, but there's more work there that needs to be done. So normally, I would not be in, these buildings have already had twenty-five years of abatement. Now we're gonna give them ten more. That is a pretty hard pill to swallow, in my opinion. But I don't know that we have much choice. I do think that we need to insist, I don't know who the "we" is, the aldermen maybe, needs to insist that they do a good job here. They really spend enough money and put the windows back in where they go, so that what you end up with is a better product than what you had originally. And I think city taxpayers deserve that for thirty-five years of tax abatement. So I'm in favor of it, but... John, or Dick?
Rowan.
Yeah. I guess I wrote the question back to you. What is the answer to the question I've been raising about the existing redevelopment plan in the area? What's the legal answer? That is not, that redevelopment plan has not been terminated.
So you're talking about the three-fifty-three?
Yeah, the existing one. It's still there, it's owned by Mark Chaffey.
Yeah. Yeah, it was established in nineteen seventy-six.
Right.
The language in there talks about twenty-five years. They can continue to offer tax abatement for twenty-five years from seventy-six to oh-one. They could have started tax abatement as late as two thousand and one. That tax abatement could run another twenty-five years.
But we've done tax abatement under that plan since two thousand and one.
Using the three-fifty-three?
Yeah. Fifty-seven-hundred, Mr. Carson. Nine in place. Rich, I know you, this is the guy that keeps writing to you, Rich.
Smart, smarter plan?
Saying, when are you going to terminate this redevelopment plan? Remember that? The city councilor had it, it's been going on for four or five years. And now we are gonna, just on the same properties, put another redevelopment plan on top of it. And the question that I keep raising with everybody, which I think deserves a legal answer, is what happens, I mean, what are we gonna do with that original redevelopment plan? And who's gonna get to the bottom of that?
So there's probably two answers. One, that's not very good. But we've discovered that the redevelopment plans have two components, a private sector component when there are three-five-three, and the city sector component. And so we're cutting our teeth on trying to learn how that applies to a situation at Le Cleve's Landing, which has a three-five-three that's somewhat active and has some clock issues. So that's where we're focusing our attention, to understand that one. And that's gonna come to the commission probably next month.
Let me just say, I don't have to have the answer to this question today, but I really would like for it not to continue to be ignored. I'm gonna vote for this. I think, you know, it's our best hope, but I think this question deserves the answer.
Right. So we're gonna use this other case as a test for part of the answer, then we can set the stage for this. One of the things that we have found is what's gone on with the parcel development agreements between the two private parties. In this case, with the clock in this property, starting with the tax abatement, we'll have to figure out how to get the assessor rolled in to understand that one.
Other questions?
You know, I have to agree, I go with quite a... I've had full windows in them. I can't imagine that they're so functional within the interior of the building at this point, that it would be a detriment to put them back. And just from the outside, even with faux windows on the outside, I mean, I have to believe that the maintenance on those over a fifteen, twenty-year period are not going to reap the returns in terms of the property values, not only for this specific property, but the properties surrounding it, that restoring it to its original use would do. So, I mean, I certainly appreciate anyone investing three million dollars into a property, but I'd like to make sure that it lasts, especially if we're giving additional tax abatement for the project.
Other kinds of questions? Any other questions?
I move, Lee.
Approve of blighting?
The blighting of these two properties.
In conformity with...
In conformity with the...
Second.
The move is seconded. Could we read the rule?
Sure. Alderman Crusen.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Chair Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Peebles?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Spade?
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sid.
And we'll move on to something that we usually would have delegated, but...
Right. So Alderman Crusen has noted that we have projects that are under an acre that might have particular interest, either because of their size, dollar-wise. And so this is one that we're bringing in that classification, that it could have been delegated, but we're bringing it to you because it's worth taking a look at in many ways, just because of the interest and transformation it's doing in this part of town.
This is a, just a quarter of an acre site. It consists of a couple of parcels and is located in the mid-block in the forty-three-hundred block of Manchester, along the Grove Entertainment District in the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood. The site is also located in the Forest Park Southeast Historic District, which is listed on the National Register. The existing uses are a vacant one-story commercial building and a vacant lot. What's being proposed is the demolition of that building and the construction of a two-point-three-million-dollar, three-story mixed-use building. That project would include three thousand square feet of commercial space, twenty apartments, and twenty structured parking spaces. Preliminary approval for the demolition of the building, as well as the construction, was granted by the Preservation Board back in July of this year. The respective developers are Forty-three Twenty-One Twenty-Five Manchester LLC, Kyle Miller and Sean Spencer are principals of that firm, and Mr. Spencer is here tonight. This is a photo of the redevelopment area, the building and the lot. On the left is the one-story commercial building. As you can see, includes three storefronts, and City Records indicate that it's been vacant since about two thousand and eight. The vacant lot used to have a commercial building at the rear of the parcel, and City Records indicate it was torn down in two thousand and eleven. The large photo on the left shows the redevelopment area. There's the white building and the vacant lot, as well as the two adjacent properties to the west and to the east. Off to the west is the single-family building. You can see that's one-story and has a large side yard next to the redevelopment area. And the adjacent property to the east is a two-story commercial building with a restaurant on the ground floor and a parking lot to the east. These are some photos of the remainder of the block. So looking off to the western side of the block, this is that single-family building, as well as the adjacent structures. And looking east along Manchester Avenue, this is the two-story building with the restaurant going towards Tower Grove Avenue. Across the street are two two-story residential buildings, and immediately adjacent to that is an institutional building occupied by Family Care Health Center. There's been a number of streetscape improvements along Manchester Avenue, I think you're well aware of. Lots of renovated buildings, including the Sweetie Pie Restaurant. You can see some landscaping added to the corner, some new trash cans, trees, and street lighting, some distinctive street signs that were added, and two large signs that market the Grove Entertainment District at the end.
And those signs ought to remind us, one of the reasons why I said, we wanted to bring it to you, because it's interesting and different, in a dynamic part of town that some of us probably experience more than others, so this is a way to sort of show you something that's happening in that, this part of town.
And for those of you who haven't been down there and seen it at night, the lit signs with the Grove are worth a visit. These are some renderings that were submitted by the respective developer. Again, it's a mixed-use building. The building would have some metal zinc panels along Manchester Avenue, along that south elevation. This is a photograph of the forty-three-hundred block of Manchester. Superimposed in that is the proposed building. You can see how it fits in with the rest of that block of Manchester. These are some floor plans. To the left is the first floor. Running along Manchester is the commercial space. You have two storefronts, the entrance to the upper-floor apartments, and to the rear are twenty parking spaces. These are enclosed within the building that would be accessible from the alley. And as you can see, the building would, footprint would basically occupy the entire length of the parcel. The image on the right shows the layout of ten apartments for each of the two upper floors, the second and third floor. There would also be a rooftop deck as part of the facility. The city's strategic land use plan designates the site, as well as much of the frontage along Manchester Avenue, between Street Highway and Vanneven, that is a neighborhood commercial area. That designation encourages commercial buildings, and in particular, mixed-use buildings. So the redevelopment plan is in conformity with the strategic land use plan. The redevelopment plan provides for the use of ten years of tax abatement, eminent domain is not necessary, and staff has recommended approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Sean Spencer is here as well.
Do you think commissioners have any questions for Mr. Spencer or...
Sean, these are all one-bedroom units.
Fifteen one-bedroom, five two-benz.
Okay, but there's only one garage space for each unit?
That's correct. That's all we could fit on that particular site.
Okay.
But we do have potential to build a parking, small parking lot across the street.
In that vacant lot?
The vacant lot.
I didn't touch on that in the presentation, but it was included in the resolution.
I just, I know that parking is a huge, huge issue over there right now, so I couldn't imagine, I mean, if you have twenty units and they're all, you know, occupied and there's twenty-five, thirty people living in there, that's ten more cars on the street, but...
They're all gonna ride their bike.
Thank you.
Well...
That's the idea, that we are gonna promote the sustainability and hopefully, if you're working in cortex...
I didn't notice any scooter parking in the garage.
As a resident just across the street, I'd more like to thank you for only providing a spot per car, because we've seen with others in the neighborhood, they, you know, two-and-a-half, two-point-eight parking spaces per unit, which is ridiculous. So it's actually a breath of fresh air to see a developer do one with, you know, a unit with a spot. And if you wanna do something else, you figure that out as an individual. But until we force density, we're never gonna... But until we force density, we're never gonna change the patterns of people, so.
So, but I guess my question, though, to that point, is why would you put a surface parking lot across the street just for the residential?
Because we have the two commercial spaces, and those two commercial spaces may have two to four, uh, new jobs created per space, maybe more. Uh, and they may need some dedicated parking, so that was our thought process. In addition, to be able to have something that come back to these types of boards and say, we're thinking about all these options.
Do you own the lot across the street?
That's a LRA-owned lot. At the present time, I believe there was, uh, an approval for that lot to be part of this development.
Okay.
Just kind of curious, what, uh, with that much coverage of, of that lot, are, is MSD making you go through any special hoops to, to your stormwater management?
I don't have that cost, uh, allocation yet, but it is significant, and there'll be drainage in the parking lot to, to take care of.
Under the garage, or the parking garage, or?
That's right.
So, are you doing any green roof, or any-
There isn't a green roof, but the way that, uh, it was recommended by MSD is the appropriate way to handle, handle the situation.
Other questions?
Well, I just, uh, I don't do this for most reasons, but I did go to the sustainability plan worksheets here, and, uh, B1 is prioritizing for developments of the developed variety, compact community, vibrant, excuse me, streets. It was, check, not applicable. And I just wanted to point out, I think it's very applicable to, to this project, as is, uh, J-four and J-eight. Uh, incorporate sustainability and economic development, and, uh, residential areas, mixed uses.
Still working with the Altria, if, thinking about that more proactively.
Um, I think it's not a lot of urgency.
Other questions, comments? Has been a motion applied of light and conformity of the redevelopment plan in the city?
So moved?
Seconded? Called the roll, please.
Uh, Alderwoman Cruzen.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Chair Stotter.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers.
Aye.
Commissioner Peebles.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
Thank you.
We're back to the adoption of our plan that we put that last.
Good evening. Um, this is a continuation of the, the presentation in public hearing at, at the last meeting. Uh, there was, uh, if you remember, the, the plan's available online. Obviously, all of you received copies. It was available at the Baymont Library, uh, in our offices. Um, there was a presentation at the September third meeting. Gary Best, uh, gave a, a long introduction of, of the park and the, and the planning. And then Megan Ridgeway, and Russell, Mark Kurtz, uh, did the presentation of the specifics of the park plan. Uh, I wrote a memo dated September twenty-sixth, which summarizes the questions and comments that we have lively discussion, and I think everybody remembers. During the presentation and the public hearing, to citizens that spoke, uh, there were no other comments. Uh, we gave a two-week period to get additional comments. We did not receive any. Uh, and, um, there's two edits that, that come from it, that one is omitting a funding paragraph about the sale tax that really, uh, isn't appropriating or, uh, there's a sale tax that the Arch One deals with neighborhood parks, that really not a reason to have it. So, uh, the Parks Department's taking that paragraph out. And the other thing is just to put in, uh, that it's adopted by the Planning Commission on this state as a kind of standard, uh, way of acknowledging about the Planning Commission. Uh, this area is sort of the strategic land use plan. This is the recreation, open space preservation and development area. Of course, the park, uh, is, uh, sits with that. Uh, and in the memo that was handed out, uh, the handout, uh, staff finds that the plan is a sound planning document to guide improvements, uh, in the North River Park. Uh, we find the planning conformity with the strategic land use plan, and recommend, uh, adopting the park plan based on two edits. The one, adoption language at the bottom, eligible page, and, and the handout is the specifics of someone, like, uh, different spelling of their name, or names, or middle initial, or, uh, some, they make changes. And, uh, and then omitting a third paragraph on page seventy-eight, which deals with the one-eighth cent deal. It really isn't an option for funding it.
And if you recall from that discussion with, with, uh, Ivy sitting where Alderman Cone is, and Gary was right behind her, there was a great mishmashing about, about, about a committee. And what was sort of being lost there was a misperception that there's a, there's a group called Forest Park Forever that has a role in Forest Park, and there's a group that's called the Forest Park Advisory Committee, and that was getting all mangled together. Alderwoman Cruzen was, I think, got Ivy on track to understand that, that what's in there is not a reference to a independent group like Forest Park Forever, but that the, that the Director of Parks, Recreation, Forestry likes to establish the citizen guidance groups for what they do in the park. And that's what was, that's what's being established in this plan, that this park would get a citizen's guidance group that would be advisory to, to Gary.
And I, I think you can certainly, uh, talk about the comments and the questions. I, I would chat, a lot of, there was something about procedures, especially at the public hearing. But a lot of it was, was good ideas of things you need to worry about flooding. And so, I mean, I think, as Gary Best mentioned, uh, these are things that'll be helpful when they get to the design phase. And I didn't feel like there was any specifics that needed to be in the plan, uh, knowing that, uh, when they go to design, I'd look at some of these, uh, problems and opportunities that were pointed out by the Planning Commission.
That's a good point. When we adopt something, we're not doing engineering drawing of those concepts.
Any other questions? When will you put this committee together? When does the committee get put together? Adopted and voted.
Looks like Gary's ready to act on it pretty soon.
Okay. Um, there's been a motion?
Move adoption. Back.
I'm moving. I can do, John, do you have a comment?
No, I, I'll say it after.
Are the previous roles been requested? Are there any objections by any of the commissioners in the room or on the telephone to be used as a previous role? Seeing none, the matter passes?
Thank you for all your efforts. I've been appreciative.
So one of the things is, is, and Lila and I both serve on the Forest Park Advisory Board, is, is it gets great passion for these parks that have a plan, and then when there's some money that comes for them. And they have a role to try to help guide the specifics of, of the design. And then they have another role to help say, oops, when you're making a change that's too big, it's time to go back to the Planning Commission.
Uh, we'll move on to delegated items. We've got a list of delegated chapter ninety-nine.
So just as usual, it's, is that we have two categories of delegated items. Uh, one, uh, generally the chapter ninety-nines that are under an acre. We brought an exception to you tonight to show you. Uh, and the street vacations, uh, are also delegated. This month, there are two. Uh, one, which is a continuation of an effort that's been multi-year-long in the Slough High area, uh, working on another increment of a vacation, uh, of a section of Wise Avenue. And then another is really, uh, for a BPS project on Kings Highway, Viaduct.
Are there any questions on any of these?
I would just comment that, and I know how difficult to change this, but since you offered one today, it just brings up the issue. Um, an acre in the city is a big project. And so, some of these, like particularly downtown ones, maybe well under an acre, but that's very important.
Right.
And they actually have some scale. And I just wonder if we're using the right yardstick to determine what's important and what's not.
Good point. Uh, so, so one of the thresholds is a million dollars.
Oh.
So what we're, what we're doing, uh, so, so there's, there's two points. One is an editorial from Don. And that editorial is that we don't use redevelopment plans to transform areas as well as we should, and we use redevelopment plans as a way to get somebody a dollar. And, and that becomes site-specific for a little thing. And so, shouldn't, it's not a planning exercise. So the threshold that we're now trying to also incorporate is this million-dollar threshold. So for, so if it's under an acre and over a million dollars, uh, and has some particular planning aspects, we're gonna bring it to you.
And, uh-
And we'll write them up here.
With the photo, and there's more detail than, in that than, than the normal, you know, because-
And then the other-
And I'm not spending five hundred thousand on and getting eight hundred thousand of tax abatement because of it. You, you kind of sort that out, too.
But, but I, I'm trying to talk about planning that transforms an area. And, and I'm doing so with no change to our mission, uh, from a time when we had twenty-six staff people, we have fewer than eighteen. So we gotta do that filter. And it's well said. So, so we're trying to take a look at particularly those, if there's a threshold that's a size in dollars, that we, we'd give it extra attention.
And we have started receiving greater amounts of information on-
And, and taking when we can, like Roman did this one on, on the roll.
The Opus project is under, under an acre.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. I saw that. And, and, yeah, I don't wanna, oh, okay. What I want, I shouldn't say that back. I want to commend Betsy Bradley for the Opus project. She worked tirelessly to, to help, uh, in things that were, uh, not beyond her purview, but certainly involved in making that package be as comprehensive as the Alderman was looking at it, so.
Any new business?
Do look at the panels as you go out, if you would.
Yeah, well, a question about the panels. Where, where'd they come from? I know there's a board there, so I could probably just read that, so.
Yeah. Well, it's, uh, um, they were part of a Pulitzer Foundation grant, uh, given to study density in the city and do it as a positive. You know, Dan and the mayor's office were looking, uh, looking at the idea of sort of being, stop looking half, uh, empty, look half-full. What would be if we were aspiring to have five hundred thousand people in the city as a density? Uh, this sort of reminds us what the city looked like when we did have five hundred thousand, uh, and sort of gives a perspective to that. It was commissioned by the Pulitzer Foundation. Uh, UIC Architects were the primary people that, that put the thoughts together. Uh, short-lived display outside at their outside event at the, at the Pulitzer, with, uh, an outside lecture last Saturday night, outside. Dan and I were there. Uh, and, uh, we took a staff field trip out to do it, and then I sort of salvaged it and said, could I have it? Uh, and, uh, we, we have, so we're gonna put it up. We've got a little bit more fixing to do to, to, to deal with the panels. Uh, worked on it today. And my hope is to leave it here a month, uh, and have all the boards and commissions that come and have a chance to take a gab at, and I invite a few more people over.
Did they go back? Didn't go back to the Pulitzer, or?
We're, we're offering to store.
Oh, cool.
So, so, so it can be used elsewhere.
Yeah.
No need for an executive session?
No.
Can I have any motion for a gentleman?
It's moved.
Alderwoman Cruzen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.